All right, with it being right at 6:00, we'll call the meeting to order. And I guess Abby, tonight, you're doing a roll call.
Sure. Councilor Miller.
I am present.
Councilor Valento.
Here.
Councilor Erickson.
Here.
Councilor Larson.
Here.
Mayor Roberts.
Here. Anybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, we have an agenda in front of us. I am going to make a motion to approve the agenda with adding 8E administrative citation agreement.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have our agenda. Number five, awards and presentations. Tonight, we have Ryan from the county and we have, thank you Commissioner Miron for joining us, to present about the proposed project down at County Road 50 and Highway 61.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, staff. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. I think this is an exciting project that's been within our CIP for a number of years. You know as well as I, the accident that occurred there with a couple of high school runners a couple of years ago. And fortunately, you know, there were no deaths in that situation. But it's been a concern of ours for some time. You have a leg within that intersection. We have a county road and it's a state highway. Washington County has a good relationship working with the state of Minnesota and doing projects like this and leading projects like this. A good example is some of the improvement work that was done in Hugo this past year, if you drove through there. All of that work was done on Highway 61 within state right of way, but it was a county-led project that the state worked with us on and paid us for leading. So this is a similar project. Ryan has a history of working up here. We appreciate the relationship he has with your engineer, Ryan Goodman. I think we've worked together in the past very, very well and, you know, hope that this project will address some of the safety issues that we have concerns about. And I know you, as a council, have concerns about as well here. Ryan has worked on other projects. He's been doing some of the design work in the public open houses on this project, but also Forest Road and, you know, potentially scheduling that out there. We've been working on financing, trying to work with the city and working with Congressman Staubler on that project. And then the county road by Menards and the work that was done there, Ryan was working a lot on that. And I drove that just the other day again. And, you know, that's an improvement, a beautiful improvement in my mind to the city, adding to the trail and the walkability of the community here. And so we're excited to be back before you. And I'm going to let Ryan come up here and talk about this project. You know, there's no pressure tonight. I think Ryan's going to lay out some different options. We certainly want you to consider those and consider the potential impacts to the city. Obviously, you have a special interest in the property in the southeast quadrant of that intersection and, you know, how the different proposals here that were developed through public input, you know, might impact the city and your property there. So Ryan's ready to go.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As mentioned, I'm Ryan Haves. I'm the project manager for this County Road 50 and Trunk Highway 61 improvements project for Washington County. As Commissioner Miron pointed out, I'm just here this evening to give an update and gather any feedback the city council may have regarding the intersection project. So real quick, I'll just give a quick project background tonight. We review what we heard from the public through our two prior open houses, discuss some alternatives and touch on what we learned from the traffic study. And lastly, we review the project schedule. For those unfamiliar, the map on the right shows the intersection location, which is located just north of the new environmental center and just north of that new city-owned property on the east side of Trunk Highway 61. So Trunk Highway 61 is the main north-south highway here with a 50 mile an hour speed limit and high traffic volumes. The intersection currently operates as a side street stop control, which can make access onto Trunk Highway 61 very difficult, especially those vehicles churning left. There's an existing rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the intersection to help facilitate pedestrian crossings, though there has been a history of crashes involving both pedestrians and vehicles when those lights are activated. And of course, the Hardwood Creek Regional Trail, which is Washington County's most visited regional trail, runs along the west side of Highway 61 and is certainly a destination to those Forest Lake residents living east of the intersection. So with some of the known issues at the intersection, Washington County, City of Forest Lake, and the Minnesota Department of Transportation have kind of come together to look to deliver an intersection improvement project that addresses the needs of the community and is supported by our agency partners. So Washington County has been seeking outside funding opportunities to complete the intersection. And I'm happy to share tonight that we have secured two grants for construction of this project. First, it was a regional solicitation grant for just over $1.6 million. And the second is a Minnesota Department of Transportation local partnership program grant for another million dollars, which totals just over $2.6 million. And that, just to point out, that local partnership program is the same program that was used to fund those Hugo improvements that Commissioner Miron pointed out. So project goals include reducing the frequency and severity of crashes, provide safe, clear, and accessible crossings for multimodal users, and maintain acceptable vehicular operations for both today and future traffic volumes. So we held our first open house in July of this year at the Headwaters Parkway Service Center adjacent to the intersection. To notify the public, we sent out 1,600 postcards, hand-delivered flyers to the adjacent apartments, and used social media to notify the public regarding the open house. We also hosted an online option for those who couldn't attend in person. So we had a pretty good turnout at the in-person open house and we received some good feedback, both in person and online. What we heard was Trunk Highway 61 is a barrier for both vehicles and pedestrians. The existing rectangular rapid flashing beacon can be hard to see during certain hours of the day, and oftentimes drivers fail to yield to flashing lights. We also heard a lot about the high speed of travel, which can obviously lead to high consequences for all users. We've heard at this first open house, support for both the signalized option as well as the roundabout at this intersection. And one of the other comments that we heard frequently was that this project should be expedited. So the word map on the right reflects the online engagement of some of the key words that we heard. In total, we received 35 online comments and 10 in-person comments. So from there, the project team collected traffic counts and we formulated a traffic forecast that accounted for future growth in the surrounding area. This traffic forecasting effort allowed the team to model each intersection type to analyze their performance and ability to handle that future traffic demand. Both the signalized intersection as well as the roundabout are able to handle future traffic, with the roundabout offering less side street delays for users during those off-peak hours and lower speeds for all vehicles at the intersection. One item, council, to consider tonight is the project team did look at what would the intersection look like if we moved that west leg? And in this scenario, all traffic would then use Headwaters Parkway to the south to access kind of that development area. From that, both intersection types would continue to function acceptably in this three-legged configuration. So in September of this year, we took our traffic study findings and the two project alternatives, the signal and the roundabout option, forward for public comment. We used the same approach to notify the public as we did for the first open house. Really, what we heard was pretty strong support for the roundabout option as it maintains access to Highway 61, minimizes that delay, and keeps the vehicle speeds as low as possible, which supports multimodal travel. We heard a strong desire for improved lighting with either option. There was support for signalized option as well, and some feedback was pretty indecisive on whether the community felt the intersection should be a four-legged or three-legged intersection. So in total, on the second open house, we received 11 online comments and 15 written responses. So with that, kind of our next steps are going to be to determine the preferred project alternative and return to this council for a formal resolution of support for the project. We would then move to develop a MINDOT-approved layout detailing improvements, which would finalize the design of the elements and for approval by MINDOT as kind of the lead agency with the most skin in the game. The project team would then work through 2026 and 2027 to develop final plans and specifications, as well as prepare a detailed environmental investigation document to comply with our regional solicitation requirements. At this time, project construction is planned for 2028. So that's all I've prepared for you this evening, just to remind council, I'm just here to gather your feedback on the project, answer any questions. And after this, all, any feedback will be brought back to the project group for further discussions. So I'll open it up for any questions or conversations.
Council. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess, well, one question. Thank you for the presentation was very informative and I appreciate that. As we think about heading towards the east as a part of this reconfiguration, regardless of which, whether it's lights or roundabout, what is that anticipation for median barrier? I mean, you know, are we going to have full access to that north end of that corner lot, I guess? What does that look like?
Yeah, so through some of that development concept, we've worked with the developer there on the north side, and we were pretty clear that that's likely going to be right-in, right-out in the future via median, really in either option. It's just too close to that main intersection for, A, configuring turn lanes in and out, but also it's just really congests the area.
Thank you.
Does the staff have a, you know, between the signal and the roundabout, is there a preferred choice at this point from staff's perspective?
Well, we're still reviewing the proposed improvements at the intersection. Obviously, the staff supports both the roundabout and the signal. There's pros and cons of both of them. And with some recent applications that have come in with improvements along Forest Road, just north of the airport hangar area, those will help steer some of the decisions because of the traffic to access use in the area that's developing as this project's being developed to.
I think the one major difference between the roundabout and the signal is that you saw one of the comments or one of the pros and cons is a high speed, high consequence. With a traffic signal, with the traffic volumes being mostly on 61 and smaller volumes on the side streets, you're going to have this be a green light for a good chunk of the time. And that means people are going to continue to be at highway speeds through that intersection. Signals don't protect pedestrians any better than roundabouts do. There's emerging research to say which one protects them better, but what we do know is that speed and pedestrians don't mix and whether they're, you know, there's a physical necessity to slow down when you have a roundabout. That need isn't there with a signal. And if the pros to a signal don't outweigh that particular item, you know, I think that a roundabout will end up rising to the top of the improvement list there. So I know we're already roundabout-heavy in this town, and I'm sure there are people that are pro-roundabout and people who are anti-roundabout, but there are reasons that we do tend to use them a lot on situations like this.
My one concern with the roundabout is just we know how tough it is to see pedestrians, you know, trying to cross the roundabouts we already have in town is taking life in your own hands. So I'd almost rather see a light that's, knowing that that development is that's happening on the east side, their desire to get to the west side to enjoy the trail, I would think a light would be safer in many respects if that car's coming to a complete stop at a red light.
Is there, forgive me if this isn't here, there are like hawk crossing lights at the round, if we go forward the roundabout?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council members. So I should have, I guess, clarified, so the roundabout we'd be looking at is just a single-lane roundabout. It's not a multi-lane roundabout like that's out here on 97. So from the county's perspective, we wouldn't propose to put rectangular application beacons on all the crossings. There's just, they're kind of like a double-edged thing. So if they're there, vehicles abide by them, but if the pedestrians aren't pushing them, those vehicles aren't abiding, you know, they're not obeying the common practices. So they're kind of a double-edged sword. And so in this situation, from the county's perspective, we wouldn't be proposing it, but knowing it's a multi-agency project, we would certainly, you know, look into it and evaluate it if it was, you know, desired.
I think those are certainly good comments and questions from both of you there. That would be great topics for discussion as we go forward on further public input. We've got a little ways to go here yet. I think, if I may ask another follow-up question, I noticed one of the word puzzle things there talked about expediting the project. We have a 2028 construction planned as, seems like two years to do the plans and environmental review on a project of this nature might be packed into one year. Is there a possibility of 2027 construction?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council. So the regional solicitation funding that we got for one point, call it $7 million, was actually funding for 2029. So we've already advanced construction from there to 2028. And any further advancing just would mean that the agencies would need to front the money until we can be reimbursed in 2029. It's certainly, I agree with administrative stats, that it's, it is a timeline, but with an environmental process, there's also, you know, six-month reviews for the DNR and heritage societies and things like that that we need to consider. That being said, I, it could be expedited if there was a strong desire and we could come up with some kind of partnership on funding that.
Yeah, that was kind of my same thought or question was if it's expedited. But learning that it was programmed for '29, I guess that is moving it up a year, so that's better than '29. But any way that could be moved up would be ideal, obviously. On another, just another question or comment, on that, on the roundabout or either one, would that, it'd just be a three intersection? I think as it currently sits, that would probably be okay, but with that large garage condo business that's coming in on that, on that west side, I think access from there would be important because I don't think there'll be access Forest Road to 97, or will there still be?
That'll be a right-in, right-out onto Forest Road. But you are correct, the right-in, right-out at Forest Road or going all the way back over by the Headwaters Service Center would be those two outs. I have talked with landowners in that area, developer in that area, that I was concerned about the potential loss of access up to Highway 61.
That's huge.
Any other thoughts or questions from council?
Well, just back to the roundabout versus the traffic. Like with the roundabout, you're definitely going to be slowing the traffic down. And I don't know if there's any way to still keep that pedestrian crossing flashing beacon thing. I think they can set that up to make it a little more easy to see people, since that roundabout situation does pose to be a problem, especially like what we have up here. We don't have a beacon here at Broadway, but sometimes when you get in that roundabout, it's too late to see the pedestrian there. But I think that'd be very useful.
Yeah, Mayor, member, or council member Larson, we, as a project team, we can certainly visit it if we go down that roundabout avenue. Happy to discuss that with city staff and just come up with the best game plan that all agencies can be supportive of.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mayor, city council, one more comment. Maybe we flip back to page six. I think that was the one. Yeah, right there. So this is a good example of something that we're reviewing with this intersection and the uses that are going on and future uses for this intersection. And you look at a roundabout, you see how kind of streamlined where traffic will be going. You know, it's pretty easy to determine where you're going. If the project does move forward with a signal, you'll have many more turning movements within that intersection, which might be confusing to a pedestrian use in that area as well. So these are other things that we have ongoing discussions with, so.
You can also see that there, you know, level of service is kind of an interesting metric, but you see the roundabout performs better. It's got level of service A at three of the four legs, where the signal has Bs and Cs. It's much like a letter grade in school. As are good, D's are bad. And it just has to do with sort of the overall congestion of the intersection.
Anything else? Thank you, Ryan, and Commissioner Miron, thank you. Always happy to see you here in attendance, so thanks for coming this evening.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Next item, open forum. It's an opportunity for anyone to speak of any city business, take a couple minutes, just limited to a couple minutes, state your name, address when you come forward.
There was nobody signed up this evening.
All right. With that, we'll go to the consent agenda. I am going to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda A through M and O.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a consent agenda approved. With that, I am going to move then, we'll move the consent agenda item N to the first regular agenda item. If you read your packet, you saw that we had a very generous donation. Just let me pull it up here real quick. Apologize. By the Lakes Area Asphalt Company and Community Co. Church, they came and donated their time efforts and that to redo the parking lot at the senior center. This was to the tune of $15,000 or so and then additional with all the extra volunteer time. So I just wanted to pull that from the consent agenda and just highlight that and thank the people for that type of commitment. It's stuff like that that makes this community so great. I mean, that clearly is a 15-plus thousand dollars that doesn't, the taxpayers don't have to pay for right now, so we really greatly appreciate that. So with that, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 111.10.25.03, the accepting donation to the senior center.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, 8A Decertification of TIF Districts Cherrywood and Centennial. And it looks like Ellie's going to walk us through that.
Yes. So prior to getting to the decertification portion of this agenda item, we are going to give a brief overview of TIF districts and what they are and how they impact the city. Next slide, please. Our agenda will be TIF cash flows, use of TIF, impact of TIF, and then TIF districts as it relates to the city of Forest Lake. Next slide. TIF, or tax increment financing, is a public accounting tool that we can use to help foster economic development, redevelopment, and housing development that would not otherwise be able to be used without additional assistance. In order for something to be qualified for a TIF district, they need to pass what is called a BUT-4 test, which requires them to meet a bunch of thresholds, so then we know it will be a worthwhile adventure for the city to partake in. The most important thing about TIF is it is not truly a tax reduction. When we look at a TIF district and we go to evaluate it, we look at what the current property tax basis is. This is what's used moving through the life of the TIF cycle, and that's what we use for all taxing jurisdictions. So that is what is factored in for county tax, city tax, and then any levies that would be brought on by the school. And it is also important to note that when we do look to then decertify a TIF, we're not putting any of that additional funding back on our citizens. It's really just using that additional value add from the tax increment finance district, expanding our current property tax base. So Abby, if you can go to the next slide. When you sit in any TIF district presentation, you are going to see this value. And so as I was referring to in the previous slide, we talk about the baseline property values. So that is at the creation of the TIF district. And so that is that nice gray bar. And you can see that expands for the entire duration of the project. And then as the project continues to go on, we get that increased captured value. And that increased captured value continues to grow and expand as the TIF district comes to maturity. And then once we hit that termination or that final decertification process, then we hit that full value. And that full value of termination is what then is brought back to our current net tax capacity. Next slide. The uses of TIF can be used for anything from land to site improvements to adjacent infrastructure. And within each of those, you can do acquisition to funding additional parking to then also supporting land and other utility improvements. So as TIF districts relates to the city of Forest Lake, we are looking for the council to approve to the decertification of two districts, TIF districts, Cherrywood and Centennial. This brings an additional net tax capacity of roughly 217K to the city. And so we worked within Ellers, who provided us the tenure plan, to factor in what would the outcome of decertifying these districts look like. And so when the general primary levy was brought in front of the council back in September, the decertification of these TIFs were already reflected. And what the reflection of these TIF districts allow us to do as a city is it allows us to expand the future of our property taxes that are currently collected without then putting that back on to the citizens and without having to increase that additional tax rate. Does anybody have any questions with just a basic overview of what a TIF district is or how the decertification process relates to the current 2026 levy?
Just to confirm, we've already factored into our budget discussions that these tax dollars are coming back on the rolls.
Correct. So after reporting was done, we realized early in 2025, prior to becoming, that we hit all of our states' pay-as-you-go obligations.
One important factor to remember is that regardless of whether or not a TIF district comes or is decertified, the number that gets talked about a lot during budget time is the increase in the levy. That increase in the levy is not affected by whether or not a district is decertified or not, because you're, the increase in the levy is brought on by real spending and those choices that we make in terms of adding staff, doing projects and those type of things. What it does do is it lowers the tax rate. And that unfortunately doesn't often get talked about. I know, as we talked before, Hugo does a nice job of making sure that everyone understands that, and maybe we should do a little bit more of that. But it keeps that tax rate. So if you were to say, you know, look at what our preliminary levy increase is, and then you look at what our tax rate increase is, the tax rate increases much less than our levy increase because we are expanding, we continue to expand tax base, not just through this decertification, but all the new construction that went on in the last two years that's slowly coming on the tax rolls here. So I always talk about it in terms of the numerator and the denominator. Remember that this is an increase in the denominator. To go back to fifth grade math, we learn that the bottom number is the denominator, right? So it's important, just as important as controlling the numerator or our spending, it's also important to increase the denominator as well. And that's what this is doing tonight, and that's what growth in general does for you.
Question. Are these, if this was in the packet somewhere, are these coming decertifying earlier than scheduled?
Correct.
Both of them are?
Correct. They hit their obligations within the contract prior to the decertification.
And do you know what was, where in 2001 was that, you know, like are we a couple years, three years?
I believe, do not quote me, they, one was three years and one was five years.
And that's, you know, very typical when we do TIF districts, we are a bit conservative in how we model them so that we don't, and the people engaging in the development want to have it, see it conservative as well, because they want to make sure that before the timeline runs out, that they get the full value of that TIF note. And of course, in a city's perspective, we like to get to that full value and make sure that we're not running up against that timeline. But it's always nice to finish early, get that back on the tax roll earlier than expected, so.
We're moving forward then. Does any, council have any other questions on how TIF works? All right. The next steps is?
So we would seek approval of Resolution 11102501. And within that resolution, it also talks about some financial things that we have to do on the background just to get it cleaned up at the state level. So if you do have any questions along what those mean, I'm happy to answer those. But the most important part is we are able to then put this back into our tax capacity.
All right. Just a couple comments. This is a great tool. We hope to be able to use this in the future. We've got some potential project downtown that this would be perfect for, TIF. And so it's great to get on, you know, get decertified earlier, get the tax dollars coming in quicker. And so this is great. Thank you for taking that time to explain TIF in general. So, does anyone interested in making a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the attached Resolution 11102501, Decertification and the Transfer of TIF Funds to Pay the Intra-Fund Loan, Thus Increasing the City's Tax Capacity by an Estimated $217,729 for Pay 2026.
Motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8B Franchise Fee. And Ellie, you're out again.
So I'm actually going to let Mark take this one. I was supposed to update the agenda, but it got printed prior to be doing that. So, Mark?
I'll take it away here, yes. And in the audience tonight is Mike Willhomy from Excel Energy. He's here to answer any questions you may have regarding this. But as, as you know, in twenty thirteen, the city adopted franchise fees and, for the first time, and put a small fee on each energy bill that people get, so that's gas and electric. And those fees are dedicated to support of our roads and our program that supports our reconstruction of roads. And since twenty thirteen, we have not revisited those fees and that, those rates. And so it seemed like an apropos time to, to do that. We looked at inflationary factors since twenty thirteen and did some math and came up with an appropriate amount to increase those fees. And generally speaking, the Public Utilities Commission that administers this likes to see that done in twenty-five cent increments. And so we've rounded to the nearest twenty-five cent increment in, in both cases for both the gas and electric. So we would be looking tonight to approve these, this increase. In your current budget proposal, a very small increase was projected. If you were to approve the increase tonight, there's an opportunity to reduce that preliminary levy if you should choose to do that with the additional revenue here. There's nothing saying you have to do that. You could simply add to the road fund and do more roads. But there would be an opportunity to use this revenue to offset property tax and levy and reduce that amount. So I would take any questions on that.
Questions, council?
No questions, just, just a comment. I mean, this is something, this council's been working through the budget process, trying to think in, in conversations with Mark, what are some different ways that we can increase, you know, badly needed revenue to provide a level of service, including things like infrastructure that the city should be doing. And so I appreciate, Mark, you bringing this forward as something to consider, especially given the fact that we haven't had any inflationary changes. And just, and we've talked about, we know that a fee is a tax and a tax is a fee, but this, you know, as you've included in the packet and through conversation, this gives us an opportunity to share these road construction costs with every user in the city, not just the taxpayers. And so I think this is, you know, I give my full support because I think this is an important step forward.
Any other thoughts, council? I would echo that same, those same comments. You know, we, we realize that at the end of the day, this is, this is really a tax. But we've not increased this since we first put this in place over, over ten years ago, twelve, whatever it is. And so I, I think it, although percentage-wise it is a pretty good jump, it does help us to fund roads in which we know we're lacking in doing that. We've been told by our, our staff that we need to be spending probably four million dollars a year in roads, and we're only spending a little over two million dollars. So this is a way to get us a little closer. And it, it, it really dedicates this dollars to roads, and it can't be used for anything else. And so that makes me comfortable with it as well. All right. So how do we, we need to do a couple of different motions, it looks like here, two ordinances and then, and then?
We would ask you for a motion to approve ordinance seven sixty and seven sixty-one, allowing adjustment to the city's gas and electric franchise fees, and then approving resolution eleven ten twenty-five oh two, authorizing summary publication.
So we can do those, the two ordinances at the same time in the same motion? All right. Anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll approve ordinances seven sixty and seven sixty-one, allowing adjustment to the city's gas and electric franchise fees.
Your motions are second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right. Looking for a motion to approve, to make a motion for the resolution on this.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution eleven dash ten dash twenty-five dash oh two, authorizing summary publication of ordinance seven sixty and seven six-two.
Just point of clarification, is it seven six-two or seven six-one?
That should be seven six-one.
I'd like to amend that to ordinance seven six-zero and seven six-one.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right. And eight C, fee schedule update.
Every year, finance under chapter thirty-five of Minnesota state law is required to bring forward to the city council a fee schedule that reflects what our current fees are, and we are required to post that online. Every time a fee schedule is updated, we have to go through and updating the ordinance that is associated with this. And so what is in front of you today is ordinance seven sixty-two, and this includes an update to the fee schedule to include the final plan development review for ten thousand dollars. And I'm gonna let Abby talk a little bit more about what that fee is and why we are updating the fee schedule.
Thank you, Ellie. So in the city code, the city code requires that the city engineer develop all final plans and specifications for a development project. The code does allow for the city administrator to authorize another city engineer to do it. And in those circumstances, our city engineer reviews the plans. So what this would be, would be allowing for another engineer to develop the plans and our city engineer to review it. I should note, just for the record, that what we'd be putting in isn't the fee, it'd be an escrow. Remember, many, some of you were here when the city added in escrows into its fee schedule a few years ago. We were always kind of operating on a charge account system where we were billing developers for our consultant engineering legal time. But we've been moving to an escrow-based, a debit-based system so that we have that lump sum upfront to cover those costs. So the plan, final plan review fee, review, final plan review would be an escrow of ten thousand dollars to cover our engineering, engineer's review of those final plans. We did discuss whether or not we wanted to wait until the fee schedule amendment comes in next month. However, we could potentially get a final plat in that timeframe, and we wanted to see that we could cover those costs associated with our review of those final plans and specifications. Any questions?
So is this a new line item in our fee schedule?
It is a new line item in our fee schedule.
What have we been doing up till this point to cover those costs?
We've, we do take an escrow, but part of it has been just accumulation from the preliminary plat and billing those out. At your meeting, I'm hoping next week, we'll have a conversation about these escrows and increasing them to match some of the neighboring properties, our neighboring city development fees and escrows to just help cover those costs upfront as opposed to kind of having these charge accounts sitting in finance. Does that make sense? Did that answer your question, Ellie?
No, no.
Essentially, we were keeping a, a credit account.
Okay. So we were still recouping our costs for this, but more on an after-the-fact basis instead of ahead-of-time?
At the time of development agreement.
Got it.
Signing. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So no, really, I mean, it's just a change on how we're doing it, but no additional fees to the developers? They would bear this cost. They're doing it now and they will going forward?
Exactly. They're paying upfront as opposed to paying it on the back end.
Okay. Any other questions of either Ellie or Abby on this? All right. Anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number seven sixty-two and ordinance amending city code, chapter thirty-five, fees and service charges.
All right. Your motions are second.
Second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eight D, Eureka Avenue Improvements Bid Results and Award Recommendation. Ryan?
Mayor City Council, tonight, before you, we have the bid results and award recommendation for Eureka Avenue. On October seventh, bids were publicly opened, five bids were received, Forest Lake Contracting Incorporated was the low bidder with base bid and alternate three and alternate four is what we'd be discussing tonight for award. Alternate one and alternate two were related to Columbus work within their city limits. They have declined to award their portions of this project just due to funding gap. And if they did include their portion with this Forest Lake project, they would be ineligible to apply for the local road improvement program grant that they are applying for to hopefully fund their segments. So tonight's, we're talking about the base bid, alternate one, alternate three and alternate four. The bids above do not include any potential street lighting at this time. We're still waiting on the federal funding review of the DNR roadway easements to reconstruct approximately fifteen hundred feet of Eureka Avenue that is located on the DNR property along Clear Lake. That easement's review has been ongoing since August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. And the last feedback we've received from the DNR is approximately another four to six weeks. And further impact may occur because of the government shutdown. So tonight's award, we're looking at doing a limited notice to proceed of the area that's outside of that area. And with discussions with city staff and the contractor, we've come to review that's what work could be completed in twenty-six, which is outside the DNR easement. And the reason that being said is because if awarded tonight, the areas that are outside of the DNR easement, they would go out and still this year place the surcharge that is anticipated to have to sit for nine months. And the ground can't be frozen, so this would be that, that window, right, to do that area in the north into the project in the south end, which would help her construction stage in between the county road projects and just the time that the project would be done. Down in two thousand twenty-seven to finish that area within the easement area of the DNR. But without having that surcharge put now, we would just assume that we're not gonna be able to have enough time for that to do what it needs to do in that area within that fifteen hundred foot DNR land. The surcharge could potentially be less than nine months, if monitoring shows no additional settlements. But even if it were six or seven months, that's still gonna lose that probably two thousand twenty-six construction season in that area in between. With the bid results, Forest Lake Contracting had a base bid, and alternate three and four combined total amount, three million three hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars and fifty cents, which is four hundred seventy-nine thousand one hundred twenty dollars lower than our engineers' estimate. But they're also five hundred seventy-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars lower than the second bid. So over a half a million dollars lower than second place. Upon review of the bids with city staff, we feel that it's best to proceed with a limited notice and do that work that's outside of the DNR easement so we can capture the two thousand, or the pricing that we got to complete that work in two thousand twenty-six. We've had some preliminary discussions with the contractor on what some additional costs might occur with two thousand twenty-seven work, delaying it there. Approximately, we're around two hundred sixty-five thousand. That would include increased costs with materials, labor, fuel and trucking. But we still feel that if we went out to rebid this, we would still, and then having twenty-seven, everything done in twenty-seven, we'd be significantly higher, especially with the bid that we did receive to date. So therefore, staff recommends that the city award the contract to Forest Lake Contracting to perform the work included in base bid, alternate three, alternate four in the amount of three million three hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars and fifty cents with the following conditions. A limited notice to proceed will be issued to complete the soil, surcharge placement outside of the DNR portion in two thousand twenty-five, and completion of the remainder of the work after the DNR easement is obtained. The city reserves the right to execute a change order to remove the work proposed on the DNR property from the project at no additional cost if we needed to do that too. So with that, I guess I'll just open up with any questions you may have. I'm assuming there's gonna be a few.
Counsel, or counsel, any remarks on anything right now?
Yeah, it's a complex situation here. We wish we were in a different spot, but it's no fault of anybody here at this table. We're at the mercy of this easement, which has a lot of tentacles because it has federal ties. And right now, the Minnesota DNR is waiting for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to decouple themselves from this easement. And that's just not, there's nothing we can do to, we've tried, you know, working with Congressman Staubner on it and to no avail. We've pushed all the buttons we can, we've pulled all the levers, we just can't get it any faster. Without that in place, we really can't do the middle portion of the project. And so what, what we're saying here tonight is that we're, we've got a bid in hand to do the project, and we think it's a lower risk to award this project at the current cost and knowing that there will probably be some increased costs to do a portion of it a year later versus if we don't get any work done next year and we rebid this, we will essentially be paying for all of the work to be done the next year. So we think that if we can get some of this work done this year at the good cost that we've got here, we're steps ahead of where we would be if we had to push this a whole other year. You know, there's a small risk here that you don't ever get that easement. I don't know how that's, would be possible. There, you know, there's a road there now. You know, would that change if we, if we couldn't get that easement, I suppose, at some point? You'd have to cul-de-sac it off or something like that, but we still need access to the road on the north and to some of our infrastructure on the south there as well. So again, we feel like this particular option is the lowest risk and offers us the opportunity to get the job done at the price where we, that we have the funding to complete.
Mayor City Council, a couple of other things just to add, just to give you some more information. This is the same contractor that's the low bid being recommended for award that's on the Highway ninety-seven project. And with that, we've had a lot of conversations in regards to scheduling and staging between the two projects. If the surcharge goes on, you know, upon award tonight and in a couple of weeks, that work's done, we're probably looking at July or August when we would actually be able to start some of the work and have any major construction shutdowns within the Eureka project. But with that being said, we've also coordinated with the contractor who has started and will finish the Forest Main relocation at the intersection of Fenway and Highway ninety-seven, which this is gonna allow us to get up and through Fenway faster next construction season. So there's more, you know, a lot more going on to it than just this project and how we can try to coordinate and help traffic. That way, Highway ninety-seven could hopefully be open sooner all the way to Fenway. And then, you know, by the time we really get into the weeds of this, then ninety-seven to Fenway is open, right? So that's other things that we've been doing on the back end of all this as well.
Mark, from a funding standpoint, if worst-case scenario, we don't get the DNR grant, is there any risk of the monies that we receive from the state if this project isn't completed in its entirety?
I don't know, Ryan, you'd have to help me with that one. The funds have been encumbered, right?
And we're, this is a project you don't have to wait till award to request, request reimbursement through the grant agreement we have. We've already done one reimbursement request. Another second one is actually in progress. The funding just needs to be encumbered by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. But the actual expiration dates of the, the funding, there is none. But if you didn't request the money before then and have it paid to the contractor, that's where you would risk some funding, right? But I don't foresee that gonna be an issue, especially with the timeline that we're proposing here. If we're able to do what we presented tonight, that would really only leave fifteen hundred feet of roadway in two thousand twenty-seven.
So, so, and I'm not gonna get a guarantee out of this. You're saying that, that Eureka would likely not be, could still be passable until July-ish, and we would by then, for the most part, be able to get ninety-seven open till Fenway?
That's our plan and what we've been trying to.
I think what we, what we can guarantee is that it will be a shorter timeframe when the two of those, where there's the potential for the both of them to be closed at the same time if we get this work rolling. If we don't, there's the big potential that they're both closed at the same time. And I think that's where we're, we're hoping to squeeze that timeline down to a week or two if we, or nothing, hopefully. But we think that that timeline can get squeezed down to late July to early August as kind of a worst-case scenario.
I learned this summer that how many traffic engineer we have living in the city of Forest I learned this summer that how many traffic engineer we have living in the city of Forest Lake. And so if they were very critical about Broadway and 97, this is going to be tenfold. So I just, I just want to make sure council is aware of that and ready for that feedback. For lack of a better word. So that's just, I guess for me, that's the, this is, you know, I guess the risk of, for me, the risk of not getting this approval from the DNR or the feds or whatever, whoever that's from, I'm less concerned about that than I am just this timing is. Because if we weren't going to approve this tonight, then likely construction on Eureka would be all in '27, correct?
Yes. And if I could say one more thing about the risk, what we're, what we're going to be doing this fall is going to be a, you know, I'm talking, when I say very low amount of money, but we're talking about $200,000 or so worth of surcharge they're going to be putting on. The, the risk to rebidding this is easily exceeds that. And so we're, as Ryan mentioned, one of the conditions here is that we're issuing a limited notice to proceed. So we're awarding the contract, and then the next step in the award, in the contract, there's various specific terms here in the contract. You award a project, and then you give someone a notice to proceed. That notice to proceed allows them to spend money and encumber costs and that we, that we would owe them. But we're giving them a limited notice to proceed to say, you can only do these specific things. And so we're only giving them authorization to do some very specific things that we're not going to overextend ourselves into the millions of dollars here. We're going to be into the low hundreds of thousands that we could, that we, if, in the worst, worst-case scenario, we didn't get an easement, we would be out that money. But that, we'd be out a lot more if we let this go into the next year, and that would be a for-sure thing, right?
I had one other follow-up question, but I lost my, lost it. Anything else, council? So that, do we, that's coming back to me a little bit. If we did issue this, and for some reason, the feedback was very strong, can you, we can still do the surcharge? Can the surcharge sit for a year? Or is that not ideal? Or what are we, are we committing ourselves to construction?
The surcharge could sit as long as you wanted it to. Once settlement occurs and things aren't moving anymore, then that would be the time we would start getting gearing up for the actual project, right? All the estimates done by the geotechnical company are estimating that is around nine months.
Yeah, which, if you wanted, I think what you're getting at, Mr. Mayor, is if you wanted to say, don't start until we're done with 97.
Or a lot other opportunity for us to have a check-in, is council, to see if we really want to move.
And we could, we can have that conversation as we approach that, and it would just be a matter of whether or not they felt like that was going to impact their costs, right?
I, I think it's, obviously, it's ideally at the same contractor. That's, that's great. That puts you in a much better position than if you had two different contractors trying to get this work done. All right, anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, make a motion to the city award the contract, a Forest Lake Contracting Inc., to perform the work included in the base bid, alternate three and alternate four, in the amount of $3,387,743.50 with the following conditions: A limited notice to proceed will be issued to complete the soil surcharge placement outside of the DNR easement portion in 2025, and for completion of the remainder of the work after the DNR easement is obtained. And the city reserves the right to execute a change order to remove the work proposed on DNR property from this, from the project at no additional cost.
Your motions are second.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eight E, 55 Fourth Avenue Northwest Administrative Citation Settlement Agreement and Abbott.
Thank you, Mayor Roberts, members of the council. Earlier, you received correspondence from me that included the staff memo and the settlement agreement that's for your consideration tonight. As noted in my memo, the conenforcement officer, Dan Pearson, cited the property owner at 55 Fourth Avenue Northwest for a few different things. The property owner appealed the citation, and in the process of setting up an appeal hearing, the property owner agreed to enter into a settlement agreement with the city. So just a quick summary for those that weren't on the council at the time and for those that were. Actually, I don't, I think Hannah might have been the only council member when we adopted our administrative citation program in January of '24. This was designed to create an alternative method of enforcement outside of the criminal citation system or criminal enforcement system. It empowers staff to go out, confirm a violation exists, send notice, give time, work with landowners to clean them up. And if they don't, then we can administratively cite the, the landowner. This landowner was cited for two different things: Unsheltered storage and unauthorized vehicle. Unsheltered storage really pertains to the personal property, clutter, I don't want to always say junk. I don't want to classify people's personal items as junk. But essentially, it's excess amounts of items. In this case, it was building materials, trailers, lawn mowing equipment or lawn equipment, bicycles, that were all just sitting outside and weren't inside a building. And then also unauthorized vehicles. And that is not only unlicensed vehicles, but in an excess amount per licensed driver. It does like, play more of a heavy focus on inoperable vehicles, so on that unlicensed or dismantled vehicles. There were several on site. The property owner has made efforts to rectify the violations even through, since the citation and working through the settlement agreement, but additional work is needed. Settlement agreement conditions do indicate that the property owner would build, obtain a building permit, construct a structure and rectify the outstanding violations within the next 12 months. Failure to do so would reinstate the citation and allow us to then recoup costs associated with this. It also would waive their right to appeal the citation again or any subsequent citation for the same matter on the same property. So let's say they end up in this agreement, cleaning it up later down the road. We don't necessarily have to send notice, we could go move right to a citation. So included in, on the, should have been included on the dais tonight, but certainly sent to you via email and will be uploaded as part of an amended packet, is a settlement agreement. And staff would recommend the council move to approve the settlement agreement with Samara Montoya, property owner of 55 Fourth Avenue Northwest with major modifications by the city attorney. Do you have any questions?
I have one. Abby, have you reviewed the site and is it possible to build a garage on the site?
We have reviewed the site. There is the possibility of building a garage in the northeast corner on the site of the property. The specific site plan has not been approved or the building that's been proposed, which is why we are giving the landowners some additional time to obtain that building permit, to work through the provisions of the zoning code with staff in-house.
And it's city water and sewer there?
I would, I'd have to double-check. City water and sewer are certainly available, I'd assume. But if you could give me a second, I can answer that question specifically.
Only concern I had was if it's septic, if they would then be building on their alternative site, and that might not be.
That's a great question. It's unlikely in old, when I kind of consider Old Forest Lake, that it would be an older septic system. I believe that there is sewer water available. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was this, we have a number of properties like this in the city. How did this one rise to the top here or?
We're a complaint-based city. So coenforcement officer, Dan Pearson, does them based on complaints that come in. So a complaint was filed, I think the original complaint might have been in late June, inspection in early July. This was a circumstance where the owner never reached out to Dan in the timeframe that he gave them to clean up. The time lapsed. He probably even sent two notices. We really tried to do over and above requirements, and then he sent the citation. It wasn't until after the citation went out that he heard from the owner, who then just submitted an appeal right away. This one didn't necessarily rise to the top for any reason that it was in excess more than any other property, because I think all of you, if you drove by it or, you know, know the area, probably not in excess of some other ones that you've driven by or know of throughout the community. It's just we are only inspecting based on complaint. Definitely one of those things that we will look at how we continue to enforce, what I would say is properties that with collectors. But at the same time, there's a lot of them. And they're, they're probably the, some of the harder properties to enforce because they take a lot of staff time to consistently keep going back and checking and trying to work with landowners to rectify the violations.
Questions, council? Anyone willing to make a motion?
Sure. So make a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Samara Montoya, property owner of 55 Fourth Avenue Northwest with minor modifications by the city attorney.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We are in the discussion part of the meeting, which we have no items here this evening, so we'll go right into staff updates. And Ellie, we'll start with you.
The only update we have from finances is that our next council workshop is a week from now, and we will be seeking final budget direction for the truth and taxation meeting that will happen December 8th.
Thank you. Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, nothing to report on tonight, other than Highway 97 is fun to drive.
It is.
All right, Abby?
And the only announcement that I have is our new building official, Jason Wagner, will be starting on Wednesday morning. And subsequently, with that necessarily an announcement, but a shout-out to both our building inspector Nate Moats for really stepping up and helping run the building department in, in the time period we haven't had in-house building staff. We will only have one more vacancy left in the community development department. So I also want to give a shout-out to Don Boogie. Both Nate and Don really helped hold together the community development department through the challenges that we've had in this last 12 to 18 months with our vacancies, so. B C M, Tom, good job.
Yeah, thanks to them. That's, that's great. Dave? Chief Newman?
I only have one update. Today, they picked up Engine Two, so that's the second apparatus that we've sold here in the last month. Through vehicle replacement, we've had several vehicles that are coming up. Engine One, we're working with two different brokers to come up with a price that's fair for that. Rescue Two, which was a Chevy Tahoe, that is, was sold this week, and so that'll be picked up later this week, leaving two brush trucks and Engine One. And so hopefully, before the snow flies, we'll get those vehicles sold as well. That's my only update.
Great. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, today Officer Ashley Laverens started with us. And with your approval this evening, Officer Hannah Belka will be starting on Wednesday. So I'd like to welcome both of them. It'll be great to have them both on board.
Welcome to them. Mark?
Just wanted to thank both the Mayfair folks and those from the 49ers. So two of our five bargaining units we've met with and had some excellent discussions. And we think we're still on track to try to get our five contracts settled by the first of the year. We're very hopeful we can do that, so.
Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Ryan said. You know, I hope our citizens, I know that construction is very painful. But when you drive on 97 and when you drive on North Shore and hopefully someday on Eureka the rest of the way and the remainder of 97, they'll appreciate the, those small headaches we have to put up with to get our roads in the condition they deserve to be in.
Councilmember Alito?
Nothing for me tonight.
Councilmember Erickson?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Larson?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I just want, a couple of comments. The chambers celebrate their annual awards, the Gallin Awards, and the city won an award on Arts in the Park. What was the exact name of the award? Do you recall that, Abby?
Green something or other.
Community event of the?
I think it was the Green, Green Initiatives or Green something.
And so as everyone knows, that, that event's been going on for years, and it's the dedication of our park, former parks commission, our former parks employees and current employees and commissioners. So we're very proud of that, and that event just continues to grow. I'd also like to congratulate the Forest Lake Lions for being named the nonprofit of the year. And former resident, he's still in Columbus, and a regular at city council meeting, Gary Lee, is volunteer of the year. Well-deserved for both of those, that individual and organization, so. With that, anyone really want to make a motion to adjourn?
Also move.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or adjourned?